Put the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Sitting in for manager Farman, who was on vacation, is Secretary Steve Buter. Steve, would you take roll call, please?
Yes.
Roll call. Councilwoman Berry?
Here.
Councilwoman Demko?
Here.
Councilwoman Sarsfield?
Here.
Councilwoman Coby?
Present.
Councilwoman Katina?
Here.
Council President Delos?
Here.
Mayor Kabista?
Here.
All are present. At this time, you all have copies of the agenda which were provided on the table outside. If you have any comments on the listed motions that are on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak about those before we go through those motions. So if you have any comments to make on the motions, you may do so at this time by stepping up to the podium.
Jeff Steffen, California. Couple things. One, I thank Keith Thatcher and Terry Roma for taking care of a problem for a new business owner on Main Street having to do with the curb, which is the borough's responsibility. And thank you, Terry, for calling that, that keeps attention and Keith for taking care of it for that new property owner. It's awesome. Fast action. I see a couple of things here. I see that the borough is going to vote about purchasing a big piece of property on Third Street. Can anybody tell me why the borough's purchasing this property?
We have interest in acquiring it.
For what purpose?
It's sitting dilapidated. It's a vacant property.
There are properties sitting dilapidated for years.
We have Third Street project that is scheduled to start in the spring to revitalize the Third Street corridor, and that particular building is a problem.
What's the problem? Why can't the current owner take care of the problem?
You'd have to ask the current owner.
Was the current owner sent a notice saying it's in bad shape and they need to take care of it?
In fact, we have consent to create a tear down in the life. He doesn't want it to be eliminated.
What about the house on Academy? I talked to you five years ago.
316 Academy, yeah. It's supposed to be, um, it's supposed to be down. The contractor, his mother's got cancer, and he just gave us a written schedule. It should be down here within a month.
That's beautiful. I heard that five years ago.
No, it's on the schedule. The schedule was published, Jeff. The schedule of the buildings to be torn down this year is public knowledge. It's not...
Thanks. Yeah.
Alright.
Gotcha. So, so you're gonna buy the building for sixteen four? And, uh, so the owner paid six thousand dollars for it, and you're gonna pay sixteen four?
The owner paid fifty thousand. Sheriff said.
Why, why in the Allegheny County website does it say they paid sixteen?
I have absolutely no... Which parcel are you talking about? 123rd Avenue?
Yeah.
Is the owner's Creek Side Holdings and Enterprises? I have no idea.
Allegheny County website states that they paid six thousand dollars for it in 2011.
He paid fifty-four thousand for it.
How do you know that?
Because I have the sheriff's file.
So, so Sheriff's sale doesn't record the actual...
I, I...
You know that.
I can't, I don't honestly remember what was on the website, but I know that there's a court order that he paid fifty-four thousand dollars.
So, so these guys gave a big dog and pony show to everyone sitting right here about what they were gonna do, and they didn't do it. So now you're gonna purchase it from them and spend the taxpayers' money on something that someone promised you they'd do, and they're not? Is that the business you're in?
What is, what is, what are you proposing that we do, Jeff?
I'm proposing that you let the market take care of it, let someone buy it and fix it up or tear it down themselves. Why is the borough like that?
It's for sale. Is it not for sale?
Yeah, it's for sale.
If I may offer my, my opinion, Mr. President. Uh, this property, long before the current owner bought it, sat there and sat there. This current owner committed some ideas, some concepts. Started to blow some smoke at us. Didn't happen, okay? There was another interested party when we, we gave them, gave this a plot of purchasing. But because of the way the parking is and stuff, it would be pretty difficult to make it what it once was. That's a valuable piece of property on Third Street. I believe in, in our, if we do that, there's a...
Are you in the real estate business?
No, I'm not, Jeff. You're in council business.
It's a valuable piece of property?
It's an eyesore, wasn't it?
It's an eyesore, and yeah, it's a corner piece of...
Well, wait. It's a valuable eyesore.
I believe, I believe it's a corner lot that enters into our town, and I believe that, that if we properly, you know, put it out there, that we could resell it.
So, so let me ask you a question. So the borough now refinanced it, has all this money that they don't have a plan for?
No, we, we have a plan. You can see our plans when we paved roads, okay? When we fixed the Morrow Avenue Bridge, when we did the salt check, don't come back with something that's over a year old saying we don't have a plan. We've carried out our plan.
Okay. So, how much money is left out of this million dollars? Does anyone know?
I don't know exactly.
I don't know your number.
How much do you think?
We had, we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars slated for demolitions of, of, uh, dilapidated buildings, and we have not spent all of that money. I don't know what the actual balances in the account right now.
You walk Washington Avenue every day, just about, don't you?
I walk Washington Avenue all day.
Quite frequently. Washington Avenue is the biggest eyesore leading into this town. Sidewalks, curbs, and weeds is hot. Why isn't someone doing something about that eyesore leading into our downtown? Why are you spending sixteen thousand on a dilapidated building in that part of town? And no offense, I know you live there.
Jeff, let, let me try to answer that, okay, for the, for the, uh, Third Street, okay? We're getting a grant to revitalize that whole corridor, and you know that, from this corner all the way through to the first. Okay? Now, do you think those people are gonna give us a grant if they go down there and something's not done with that building? Okay, when this man first came in front of us, he knew about the streets.
The money's already slated for that. You know that.
I understand that, but, but there's things we have to do, too.
So what do you mean, you think they're gonna give us money?
They're already, they're already giving us a hard time about this parking lot here.
What parking lot?
This one right here on the corner.
Third Street Main.
Yeah, that parking lot that sits there beside the, the Salvation Army.
Private park.
That's right. That's right. Because it's an eyesore, because it's sitting right in the corner. Jeff, that's, that's bureaucratic crap. We, we can't, I can't answer that for you, okay? But that's the only reason that we want that piece of property, because it's gonna be revitalized from one point to the other point. So we want this beautiful thing becoming done into Carnegie, and then that eyesore sitting there? It was up for sale for how many years? Nobody bought it. Nobody wanted it. I mean, it was only listed for one this last time. Nobody wanted it, Jeff. Nobody wanted it.
I think if the private market was gonna take care of the pushy markets, they would have taken care of it.
Moving forward, is that the way you're gonna spend tax dollars on things that people can't sell?
We have, we're demolishing ten buildings this year in Carnegie that did not sell. So yes, obviously, we have decided to spend taxpayer money on the building.
A lot of those were for sale.
If they're sitting empty for ten years and there's tax lanes on them, it's a pretty good chance that they were for sale and nobody wanted them. I mean, let's face it. Are you gonna say no?
It's a pretty good chance they went for sale. If they did have a for sale sign on them, they weren't for sale.
There's a lot of people that scholar the paper for Sheriff's sale, and you know those people and who they are.
Alright.
If you have a suggestion, Jeff, I mean, you're, you have the microphone. If you wanna make a suggestion, we're not getting into the real estate business. And tearing down dilapidated buildings is not us getting into the real estate business. Hey Jeff, can I ask you a question? You don't think the property's worth sixteen four?
I'll tell you what. It's worth sixteen four because that's what you're paying.
Okay, but when you came out, you sounded like we were paying too much for the property.
Well, only because they paid a lot less than that.
No, they, they paid sixteen four.
But the listener's saying, okay, I'll find that out. I'm a digger. I'll, I'll find that out.
They'll find it. Maybe it pays fifteen four four.
I'll, I'll look at that. That's fine. No, it's the market. They're paying it. That's what...
Well, what I was gonna get, and don't get angry at me by saying this to you again, we have a real estate company that has a sign on the side of the building. They have listed originally as sixteen nine.
Eighteen.
Eighteen nine. So if it's not worth that kind of money, why does the real estate company try to sell something for those kind of prices? And we've been fighting this for years here in town.
It's an age-old question, Bob. Age-old question. Can never be answered, too, right?
Well, why would the real estate company list it then if it's not worth it?
Maybe they're not a professional service.
It's a company you work for.
I know. We do it all the time.
Alright.
And you know what? A dime doesn't go into our pocket when our signs are still on the property. So it's just free advertising, Bob. You got it now. That's why it works that way. Alright, next. Thank you for your answers. I appreciate it. And congratulations on your building, by the way, and your office on Main Street. It's beautiful. Okay, under, I see that number one, Pat Katina, is in charge of administration and finance. Is that true?
Yes.
Is that your, what do you call it?
Committee assignment.
That's your committee assignment. Why, why is that you? Are you in that business?
I assigned into that job. That's why you're in it.
Are you in that business? You are, aren't you? Aren't you in, aren't you in?
Yes.
Numbers. You deal with numbers. Aren't you in charge of the festival?
Yes.
Do you have a question on the motion?
Yes, I do.
Alright, I'm just...
Where are the numbers on the festival?
The numbers can be, the numbers can be published in, I mean, what do you want? What do you...
I wanna know how much was spent and how much came in.
This is...
This is not a motion on the agenda.
Let's save it for the end. Thank you.
Are there any other comments on the motions?
My name is Barbara Holmes. I live in eighteen Charter Oak. And my husband and I have lived here just a little bit over a year, so we're still kind of getting used to how things are done here. My question really is, uh, the item under number four, Public Safety, it says there's a motion to adopt a borough ordinance two three seven seven relating to the walking of dogs in Carnegie Park. What is the content of that ordinance? What does it say? And where, where would I have gone to look for that?
Once, once it's, this is a motion to advertise it?
Oh.
So once, once this motion's...
Because the dog... The advertising was the last one.
You, you could put it on our website.
The, the advertisements are in the Tribune of Review. The, um, all ordinances have to be advertised in newspaper general circulation.
Okay, so if I get the post, is that on my blog?
Um, yeah. Unfortunately, it's...
That's, that's the only place they are is in the...
No, you can get a call... There's a notice, and it's also on, it's also posted on the Carnegie Borough website.
I looked, there are. I didn't...
Well, the full ordinance is, but the notice, the adoption, the ordinance could be obtained by contacting the Borough Building, and they could give you a copy of the proposed ordinance. We don't publish the full ordinance because that would be pretty expensive. So it's put it in the paper. So what they do is they put a notice, and it tells you where you can find it, which would be here at the Borough Building or by contacting them or to get a full copy of what the ordinance says.
Okay, well, somebody's...
Jeff, you need to tell us the question. Tell us the ordinance.
Yeah, and, and to briefly summarize, it basically is the rules for using the dog park and the, the rules that will be adopted for using the dog park when it opens. Dog park. And there's, there's, there's one change. The current borough ordinance says that there's no dogs allowed in Carnegie Park, period. Um, that's what it says. And there's, there's a change to that to allow you to take the dog directly to the dog park and from the dog park. It also establishes the rule, dog has to be on leash. She has to be registered, has to have a license, has to have up-to-date shots, which, you know, was, you know, had that on its collar. Um, it's just basically, you know, you have to clean up after the dog if you, you know, things like that and nature.
Okay, well, when we moved here last year, there was a sign, because we live just the opposite side of the park, and we do walk our dogs in the park because there was a sign that was there until a few weeks ago, had the no painted over and said dogs were permitted. So, which apparently many other people think because we see lots of dogs walk in Carnegie Park. Two of our dogs are fourteen years old. They are not dog park material. Are you saying we're not gonna be allowed to leash walk them around the road anymore?
We missed, we just had this discussion earlier today, and I, and that's what I was trying to discuss with council, but I think there's two different types of individuals that, that park, that use, that use the park for dogs. There's the individuals that would have a dog that could run in a, in a dog park. There's also a number of individuals that just like to get exercise themselves and would like to walk their dogs around the park. And I think as long as there's parameters that that individual does not invade the fields, other people's space, and cleans up after themselves, that, that that could still be permitted. But under the new ordinance, that won't be permitted. The only thing that will be permitted is taking your dog from the car to the park or from your house to the park and back. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. And I think if people are interested in using the park that way, people would need to step up and say that. And I'm sorry, I didn't get your name again.
Barbara Holmes, H O L N E S.
Thank you.
The problem is that not everybody's like you. A lot of people don't clean up. And they, their dogs go out where the playground is, and leave it there.
And they don't keep them on leash.
Right, exactly.
Although, I mean, I looked because I looked for clear signs to please clean up after your dog, and I never really saw those signs. Of course, we do.
People should just find that way.
Right, and I thought from the beginning it'd be nice to have one of those posts with the box with the bags and all that.
That's gonna be in the dog park.
Right.
And there is gonna be, have you been up, I'm sorry, have you been up there? There's two separate parks.
Right, yes.
One for big dogs and running dogs, and other ones that, would your, how about your dogs in the other park, the other park?
Well, I mean, it's a question of really whether we wanna expose them to that level of activity and their age or, and I mean, I think a lot of people wanna walk their dog, and not necessarily turn them loose with other dogs.
Let me ask you this, too. Do you stay on the road when you're walking?
Oh, yeah.
See, that's, that's where we're having the conflict here.
I don't know. I see people running in the fields, despite, I think in all senses, no dogs there.
Kids play ball in there every night, and the dogs go in there. It's a mess. They gotta go clean it up. That's what we're trying to... Not that we don't want any dogs in the park, but that dog park is beautiful. It's great.
I personally think the loop should be for walking and walking your dogs. And I think if people could coexist there, and I think along the loop, if we put a couple of those places where you can get the bags, or, or a couple of those places where you can dispose of dog crap like they have in, in other areas, then it would make it more animal friendly. But like council has said, and I do agree with council on this part, because I know they're trying to just protect, make the park viable for everybody. So it's, you know, I, I see their side. Their side is they don't want, and I feel the same way, because I used to coach a Little League baseball team for a lot of years, and I don't want the dog feces on the fields. I don't want it, I don't want the dogs invading the kids who are at the playground because everybody always thinks their dog is friendly, and sometimes dogs aren't really friendly, you know, and, and we, we want, we want it to be contained. But I don't believe that, whether you put this law up there or not, those who still take their dogs and let them run off the leash in the park are still gonna do that. They do it now. And I, I believe that, you know, you're still gonna have a certain amount of of people do what they do all the time anyway, but I, I think there should be a lot of dog walking around the loop.
Let me ask you this. Do you walk over to the park or do you drive?
No, we walk because I just don't think if, we, we live just a couple of doors from Forsyth, but it's really not safe to walk along.
Would you come down the, the back hill? Would you come down the front green ground, that little walkway?
No, I mean, we drive. We drive.
Oh, you drive. Okay.
Yeah. No, I just don't feel the same way.
You park down the hall.
So the only, I mean, I've been to, like, not Lebanon Park, you can't take dogs there, but I, I belong to the rec center down by St. Clair, and you can walk dogs along the road. It's that big, long trail around West Mankin Park. Now, you get to certain spots, and it says no dogs permitted in certain areas, but they're walking along the paved portion, and it's a big, long bike. It's about, it's a long way to drive to walk my dogs, but I'm paying a whole lot of money to live in Carnegie.
Well, maybe we could talk about just where, you know, it's been all that old grasses.
And some different signage.
Yeah, I think, I mean, from the beginning, I thought you needed more stringent...
The issue, the issue, ma'am, is not the dog walking on the road. It's them running in the fields and living droppings where the kids are gonna play.
Right.
That's, that's really what it all comes down to. The ordinance, the ordinance is gonna say that you can walk your dog to the park and back from the park. And if it turned out that your walk to the park happened to go a little circuitous route...
If I did walk to the park, it would take you all the way around, around the trail brand.
Nobody's gonna say anything about that. They're really not. But if they see the dog running out in the field, they're gonna say you were not walking your dog to the park.
Thank you for coming. Welcome. To Carnegie, a year later, but...
Any other comments on motions that are on the agenda tonight? Rob will begin then. Uh, Councilwoman Katina, the administration of finance motions, please.
Motion to approve the minutes from the council meeting on September tenth, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Comments? No comments. Roll call vote, please, Steve. Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the October bill listing addendum.
Second.
Comments? Roll call vote, please, Steve. Councilwoman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to instruct the borough manager to execute an agreement between the borough of Carnegie and Pyrotechnica for the annual fireworks display to be held July third, two thousand thirteen at a cost of five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please, Steve. Councilwoman Coby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to authorize the borough to purchase property located at twelve Third Street at a price of sixteen thousand four hundred dollars.
Second.
Comments? Roll call vote, please, Steve. Councilwoman Katina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby?
No.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes. Code enforcement motions, Councilwoman Coby, please. I hope there aren't any.
We had nothing this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Councilwoman Demko, public works motions.
Motion to approve pay application number two to Shields asphalt paving in the amount of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-four cents for work completed to date for the twenty-twelve pavement maintenance program.
Second.
Comments? Roll call vote, please, Steve. Councilwoman Coby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to award the Morrow Avenue Bridge reconstruction grant to low bidder Gary Mensinger, cement contractor, in the amount of eighty thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars for the base bid and thirteen thousand five hundred for the add alternate bid number two for a total of ninety-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, um, this is, it's nice that this work is going to be completed. I, it's a little disappointing that it has taken so long for this to get started. I'm sure many of you up here feel the same way, but I'm not sure where the holdup was. But here we are going into middle of October. Uh, this construction may not even get started till the end of October. It could take up to ninety days. This bridge could, they have ninety days to finish the project, so the bridge will be closed for about ninety days. And if the weather turns, turns sour relatively quickly, I'm sure it could have hampered it, you know, that ninety days. I'm glad it's being done, but just wouldn't like to have seen it done a little earlier.
Any other comments? A roll call vote, please, Steve. Councilwoman Berry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes. Public safety motions, Councilwoman Sarsfield, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one motion this evening. Motion A. It's a motion to adopt borough ordinance number twenty-three seventy-seven. The ordinance of the borough of Carnegie, amendment chapter three, part three, and chapter sixteen of the Borough Code of Ordinances relating to the walking of dogs in Carnegie Park.
Second.
Any comments or discussion?
I just wanna make one brief one. I think the dog park is a great addition. I, I, I do have to agree with Mrs. Holmes, and I think that the ordinance probably should be tabled today, and we should add the language that, you know, walking the dogs around the loop is okay and keeping them off the fields. Any, any dogs on the fields or in the grass area, subject to fines. That's, that's the way I'd like to see it worded, and, but I do understand what you guys, you know, going forward, what the intent is, so, thank you.
I think if we say, mayor, that on the enforcement side, that people have dogs that are on the pavement, on the roads, we, we will consider them to be going to in front of the dog park, and that would, that would make it okay.
I, I would be fine with that, just as long as, you know, years from now, when you and I are on this council, that it still gets enforced that way.
I should hope that it's enforced. I mean, the fact is that dogs are not permitted in the park now that we know that it's a major dog park already. It has been for years, so, uh, I think we'll probably be able to manage this.
Thank you. I think we're all on the same, at least we're on the same wavelength, though. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, there's no community development motions tonight, so we'll go to committee reports. Councilwoman Katina, anything on administration of finance?
No report this month, Mr. President.
Uh, Councilwoman Coby, anything on code enforcement?
No report this month, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Demko, public works? Public safety, Councilwoman Sarsfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna mention to everybody that October's firefighter month, um, and, you know, these brave men and women do a good job, you know, when we need them. We often don't think of them, you know, unless we need their service. Um, but, you know, if you see a firefighter, thank them for what they're, what they do for us, and that they're willing to put their lives in harm's way for the protection of ours. Um, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Berry, anything for community development?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. On the president's report tonight, I just want to comment that there is some development activity going on in town. Plus Consulting, who is the company who has purchased the old Salvation Army building and moved into that building. This is on Washington Avenue. And, uh, it's already having positive effects for the borough. You can see regularly their employees now walking down Main Street for lunch, which is a good thing for our local restaurants and taverns. And I think that type of development is going to continue. We have been waiting for some time on Dunkin' Donuts. Uh, they were supposed to submit drawings to us last month. They missed the deadline to do that. They have promised us that they will submit their drawings to the planning commission while in advance of the, their meeting date, which is, uh, October the thirtieth, as I... while in advance of the, their meeting date, which is October the 30th, is I correct?
Correct.
And they need to submit those drawings in advance so that our engineers, the borough engineers, can look at them first to see if they have any concerns, and they have promised that they will do that. Also, we have a piece of property that is commonly known as the Family Dollar parking lot, which last month we advertised for sale, and we do have an interested party in that. That advertisement bid closed on Friday, last Friday, and we do have an interested party which we will be speaking to, and obviously that goes through some amount of conversation with that potential developer before there's an actual product. It has to be discussions about requirements, prices, obligations, et cetera, but we're hoping that that will come out positive as well, and that we will have another development in that location, but there's no commitment to that at this point. Third Street Project is moving forward in the spring, and the borough's purchase of the Pucci Apartments building is part of our overall plan to redevelop the Third Street Business Corridor. And the demolition projects for this year, of which we had 10 properties listed for demolition in Carnegie, has been delayed by the contractor. He demolished three properties before the end of summer, and then there was a long period of delay. He's informed us that there was some personal issues that prevented him from getting the contract done on time, according to the award, but he has since provided us a schedule for the rest of the demolitions over the next six weeks, and we anticipate that the rest of the list of demolitions will occur in that time period. Dog Park, along with the Carnegie Park developments, has proceeded through the summer. Playground is all finished now. The paving up there is finished. Is there anything left, Councilwoman, on the park project this year that has to be done? Everything is finished.
No, Keith, everything is finished, isn't it?
The whole park project.
Park project. Project's finished.
So, the park construction this year is finished, and we're very pleased with the outcome of that. The playground is fabulous, and we think the dog park will be a big addition for our residents. And that's all I have in my report this evening. Do we have anything on the fire department, Councilman Sarsfield?
No, I have nothing to report. What I'll do is I'll add this month's report with next month's.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Police activity, criminal arrests, and citations were 34, traffic citations 47 for last month, parking tickets 66 for last month, and complaints and self-initiated activity by our department totaled 971. Last month, our department handled 14 complaints regarding abandoned vehicles, and I just wanted to give you, give you an idea of what constitutes an abandoned vehicle. If there's a vehicle parked on your street that doesn't have proper stickers, you know, proper inspection sticker, proper license plate sticker, that vehicle could be considered an abandoned vehicle. Also, if you have a vehicle that's been sitting on your street for a long time, and you're concerned that it's just been abandoned there, even if it is legal, give our police department a call. We'll check it out, at least run the plates, and find out if it's legal to be on the street. So, once again, I urge any resident, if you have vehicles on your street that still don't belong there, that are abandoned, please call us. Carnegie, in conjunction with the Pennsylvania State Police, recently helped a truck inspection checkpoint. During the checkpoint, there were, we were able to find a few trucks with minor infractions, nothing major. I really wanna thank Sergeant Kennedy for his efforts in getting those truck inspections off the ground. Majority of the infractions were smaller trucks, and in fact, I don't think we found any infractions with any trucks associated with the Marcellus Shell industry. We will continue those type of inspections. Last, last month, there was a, Councilwoman Cantina had mentioned about Heidelberg and their truck inspections. I actually contacted Heidelberg, and the chief of Heidelberg said that they don't have anyone on staff that does inspections. They do inspections twice a year, and they use the inspectors from departments that are within the SHAe Cod, which is the South Hills Area Council of Governments, and I have talked with the chief, and we are gonna hopefully partner on a couple inspections in the near future. Unfortunately, the money that's allocated for that, the grant money, is, has currently dried up, so they don't really have any grant money for inspections at the end of this year. However, I am still working diligently with Senator Fontana's office, and we are trying to arrange something. But as we know, we can do a few inspections here and there, that's still not gonna stop the truck traffic coming through our community, so Senator Fontana is actually looking into other, other ways that we can either curb it or at least monitor it or maintain it as it comes through our community, so hopefully he'll be able to help us out with that. Follow-up, this past weekend, some of our residents were complaining, you know, the follow-up with this Marcellus Shell stuff, some of the residents were complaining about a strong natural gas odor. We were informed by Gray Trees Manager that this natural gas odor was coming from a legal, might say not illegal, a legal controlled burn of gas at the Rock Station Railroad Yard. And, I don't know, it just seems that we should not have, that should not be something that's legal, and it should not be something that actually can cause alarm in our community. You know, people are smelling natural gas, they're making calls to our police department, and what that does is if there is a real gas emergency in those areas, we're unable to determine if there is a real gas emergency because we're assuming that it's because of this controlled burn. So, this is something I'm also talking with Senator Fontana about because there needs to be a little more regulation here, and I don't know what the answer is, but this is the first time I've heard of this, and I'm gonna look into it a little further, so, no, we'll continue to keep a, to monitor that. Deer issues. As you know, we're in the, this is deer season, and we're, we have had a number of deer car accidents on Forsyth Road we found, and we just wanna remind everyone that the deer are here in Carnegie, and they are prevalent. We do have an ordinance against feeding the deer, and I know a lot of you people that, that are, live up in, in that Charter Oak area, that have deer in your yards all the time, but what happens is Pennsylvania Game Commission recommends that you don't feed them because they become a little domesticated, and that's when a lot of the problems happen.
They feed themselves.
Right, they do feed themselves. So, I, I actually have pamphlets from the Pennsylvania Game Commission, if anybody would like them or like to distribute them to neighbors, about why you should not feed the deer in our area, and if anybody's ever hit a deer, which I have once before, you realize that they can do a lot of damage, not only to your carpet, to your rose bushes, to your, to your vegetable garden, to whatever they can get their...
Oops.
Yeah. To loops, whatever they can get to. I wanna thank Officer Quattror, Dax, and Detective Morris, especially Detective Morris because he was the last one to fill in for the chief who had a meeting to go to, for coming to the school and doing our first career lunch. They did a great job. Currently, we are still doing the flag surveys. The next veteran will be William Robert DeBar, and his flag right now is flying at the Carnegie Borough Building, and his service will be October 20th, 10:00 a.m. The interesting thing is this is, Mr. DeBar just recently passed away in September, and his dying wish was to have his flag flown in his service. He's actually a member of the BFW, so this is a really special tribute for us. Once again, I have talked about this in the past, that we are still looking for mentors to help out with the after-school program for the Carnegie Century, 21st Century Grant, the Carlington 21st Century Grant, and the after-school program will be at Carlington Elementary. If you're interested in mentoring, or if you know a business owner or a religious leader who is interested, please contact me or Lee Miffler at the school.
Who else at the school?
Campbell's Run Creek update. We had a meeting a little while back with three communities, Congressman Murphy led a meeting regarding the Campbell's Run Creek and the grant that we're applying for, and what we are trying to do is come together as three communities. We're applying for a CITF grant to do a study, and what we hope is with this study is that it'll, we can take this study to Congress, and that they will allow the Army Corps of Engineers to maintain the creek above the Morrow Avenue Bridge, and so that's what we're trying to do right now. And if you look at below the Morrow Avenue Bridge, they finished the work below the Morrow Avenue Bridge, and they, they completely redid the side, the siding with a lot, with stone, and cleared, cleaned out the creek, so that the water flows much freely below the Morrow Avenue Bridge. And that project was a $360,000 project, and I do wanna thank Congressman Murphy, who was able to allocate that money for us to get that work done, so that, that's a good thing. There will also be a meeting with Grindline and Ken Schultz at the skate park, about the skate park, that'll be October 18th. Ken Schultz is the donor, Grindline is the developer, and right now, we don't have a facility yet, we're still working on the facility, so please check our website for that information. And then, a couple things real quick, is that we're talking about development here. One of the things that recently moved into our community is the Off the Wall Theater, and they have their first production coming up, October 12th to 27th. The production is called The Other Place, and then following that, immediately following that, beginning November 1st, they are, they have rented out the theater to another production company who will put on the show the last five years. So, we have two shows back to back, so that place, that theater will be hopping the next month or so. I wanna thank Third Street Gallery. They, they just had the, the opening for the 66th Annual Aquius Open Art Show, and on display are a number of watercolor paintings down at the Third Street Gallery, and they will be on display through November 3rd, and they, it's a really, really nice exhibit. In fact, it's an international exhibit. There's even an artist from France and Italy that have, that have exhibits there. And then, lastly, I just want to say one more thing, is that it has been six months since the shooting up at Carnegie Towers, or six months, something, and unfortunately, the individual who was responsible for that shooting is still, still free. They have not brought him to justice yet. What I am planning on doing for the six-month anniversary in the next couple of weeks here is, I've already contacted a number of the organizations, is making sure that we bring this back to the forefront, that we continue to, that not us, but the people who are involved in this, continue to look for this individual so that we can put this shooter in where he belongs. So, I have information on that later on, if anybody was interested, talk about it later on.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, if anyone would like to make general comments on any subject, you may do so. Please step up to the podium, state your name and, and address.
My name is Phil Boyd, and I live at 333 Center Avenue here in Carnegie. A lifelong Carnegie resident, I've got comments here written down, because as you guys all know, I'm a volunteer fireman. What will happen, no doubt, while I'm in the middle of this, that thing will go off, and off the leaf, and my comments won't go anywhere, so I wrote it down so I could look for a volunteer in the audience to help me if I get called away. So, there's that, because as luck has happened so many times before, we called away at the damnedest times. Anyhow, tonight, I'm not here as anything official, I'm here as a, as a resident of the borough, and I'm here to address the issue as it relates to the borough and the fire department, and my disappointment with all of you, absolute, I mean, it makes me tremble, which is why I took the time to write my comments down. Prior to becoming a volunteer fireman, I approached you, and I had conversations with you, and I talked to Bob as well. I volunteered, I wanted to help the situation. I didn't wanna replace the attorneys, I didn't wanna do anything other than help the situation, potentially be a shepherd to drive the process through, so that A, we'd be further ahead than we are right now, which, if we went backwards, we'd be further ahead than we are right now, quite frankly. And B, I believe Carnegie is far better with its own fire department located here in Carnegie, with people from Carnegie, staffing the fire department, doing the job that they've done quite well for 40 years. By the way, this is their 40th anniversary this year. Mikey, thanks for recognizing Fire Department Month. So, to that end, I'll jump into my comments here, which may be a bit, bit proposed, but I haven't been here in a while, so I'll call on my five minutes from other months. Can you imagine living in the community where everything you read in the newspaper is positive and paints a desirable picture of that community, such that people would wanna move there, people would wanna move their businesses there? I can imagine, but only because I've got a good imagination. I live in Carnegie, in a town where my council, people that, hell, I probably voted for most of your, I did vote against you, let's put it that way, you choose to fight battles in the press as opposed to, as opposed to doing it any other way, other than doing it in the press. I mean, that's just, it's revolting, and I'm not gonna apologize for my comments. Press release issued by the borough about the fire department, the bookkeeper issued, I suppose it could be considered factual. I mean, there's, there's no blatant lies in there, but if you hold it to the litmus test of to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, it misses the mark. It totally misses the mark. The press release should've said something to the effect of, "Council fails to pass the new fire department ordinance again, and the fire department chooses not to vote to approve the bookkeeper at this time." That's the whole truth, as opposed to, I mean, I, I had the press release read to me. You guys attacked them. I mean, that's just unconscionable in my mind. Press release has language in it that says council fails, and that's what I think you did. You failed, you failed the community by taking, by taking less than complete information to the press, thereby putting unnecessary negative information out to the public. It, it's just a shame, we don't need negative information, we need people celebrating things about our community. Worse yet, the press release says, "You're not gonna have any further discussion with the fire department." That's about as fourth grade a thing as you could possibly, I'm gonna take my ball and go home. I mean, come on, guys, you know, that's all. It's non-gender specific, guys, by the way. For what it's worth, any conversations I've ever had with anybody at the fire department, and I'm not an officer, I'm a black cat, hell, I'm not even a black cat, I'm, what do they call it, a probie? Yeah, I'm a probationary rookie at this point. The only thing they talk about is when the bookkeeper comes on to work, when, when things are gonna be different in the future, how are we gonna move forward? There's still questions about how the bookkeeper's gonna work, who's gonna do what, what the pressure for the fire department does, what's the bookkeeper do, how does it all work out? But the attitude in general is one of acceptance as opposed to reluctance or refusal. And, Mikey, I'm gonna pick on you, Bobby could pick on you too, but you were having too much fun at the last fire department meeting. I, I thought you were great, because you've had issues with those guys in the past. I mean, you were joking, you were jovial. I thought you were generally trying to build a relationship with these guys. I thought it was the most, I walked out of the meeting thinking it was the most positive step council took forward in quite some time. But Mikey, to have you, have you, have your quote in the paper that says you were shocked and dismayed and whatever else you were, you were at the meeting. If you were shocked about them not voting to press that thing forward at that time, why would you not stand up and say, "Guys, Mikey, I'm not done"?
But let's, let's address just that issue.
You're interrupting me. I have the floor. If you want to comment to me, please. I sit there in silence for hours sometimes waiting for my turn. Thank you. I still love you, but I'm disappointed. So when your mother says that, that's like the worst, you know? But why didn't you stand up and say, "There's something wrong here. We had something, we, you know, we thought things were going to..." From what I read in the paper now, the, the bookkeeper was hired that morning. Fire department meeting wasn't even until that night. September 18th, that was the date. It was in the paper. And that was the day to the last fire department meeting. And that was the day supposedly the bookkeeper was hired. Anyhow. A shame on the rest of you guys, including you, Carol, as much as I love you, for letting everybody get together and go to the press with this stuff. This is dirty laundry we should be sorting out among ourselves. Goodness gracious, these guys...
And we're allowed to talk. We'll discuss that with you.
Okay, that's fine. Remember, these guys are, are volunteers. They're active members in the community. They're voters, they're taxpayers, they're Little League coaches, they're CCD teachers, they're, one guy teaches a hundred safety class. When you add the value that these guys bring to the community all together and put it in one big bucket, I think they deserve more respect than being ambushed by a press release as opposed to picking up the phone and calling them and saying, "Hey, guys, what the hell? I thought we had a deal." Or, "Hey, guys, you know, what's going on?" If for whatever reason it was not appropriate to speak up at the, at the fire department meeting, then a phone call after the fact? These are my opinions, not the fire departments again, by the way. I mean, just remember, these guys, I'm sure there's a lot I don't know about them. I'm certain of that. And I'm certain, well, hell, I mean, I wasn't the best person in the world my whole life. I do my best now, but I mean, I was a kid, I caused problems, whatever. But I'll tell you one thing that's for sure. They're selfless. When this thing goes off in fireman vernacular, it's called the tones dropping, and it makes those leaps that I made into, and a whole series of other leaps, and it vibrates, and then the county comes on and tells you what's going on and what you need to do. And chances are, you can run to the fire hall and throw on your gear and go do something, whatever it might be. Now, I've answered 24 calls in five months. I haven't, I swear to firemen, but that was during training, I haven't squared firemen fired yet, but I've done something and/or learned something on all of the 24 calls, but they happen something like this. And I'll just give you a few examples so maybe you can get some empathy for what these guys have been doing for 40 years. And this is just my own tiny little, and this isn't even the whole deal. It's just a tiny little cooking barbers on the grill and the tones drop. Sorry, honey, I gotta go, just finish, I'll be back. Tones drop. Sorry, honey, there's a motor vehicle accident on the parkway, I gotta scoot, I'll be back. Tones drop. Sorry, tree fell, took out some power lines downtown Carnegie, I gotta go, I'll be back later. Ah, there's an 80,000 gallon tanker truck. Yeah, tanker truck full of highly explosive material leaking on Nobles Town Road. Honey, I gotta run. And the list just goes on, you know, I'm in the middle of doing a home repair on something at home. The doors are off. Oh, there's a man in Bridgeville who's got his house raped to blow up. I gotta go. Why the hell, why want to be there? I have no idea, but I gotta go. And that's what all these guys do with absolutely no notice. Absol-, I mean, they, they don't get to decide when their meeting is or when they're on duty, when some, and when there's something that comes over that says, which I haven't heard yet, "There's a confirmed structural fire." Carnegie Police has confirmed there's a structural fire. They all come, they all come running. And it doesn't matter what they were doing because it's a dead nuts absolute emergency and there could be lives at stake. They come running and that's all. In spite of everything that's gone on, I've not gotten on to the first truck a couple of times because I'm a probationary rookie because there's guys there that have more experience and they're ready to roll, even though I was there before them. You still go with the best, you know, you play the best team you got and that's not me at this point, so. All right. I skipped a few things, believe it or not, but oh yeah, let's not forget one of the more important things. All the stuff that I said they do, this is a hobby. It's free. Granted, there's overhead costs associated with the fire department and that can be debated for months on end, probably has been. But they did this stuff for free. They've got a calling, it's a community service thing. I'm sure for some of the guys, you know, they're second generation and actually third generation going on in the fire department right now. It's just something they do. If you ask, I've asked a few of the guys, "Why do you do it?" They can't tell you exactly why they do it. Not like they like going into a burning building, getting filthy and soaking wet and cold, but they do it because they can, because they've had the training, because they've got the experience, because they're able. It's just, it's one of the things that they do. That's, that's it. So with all that said, I come with a solution. Not a solution so much as a suggestion, how about that? In my mind, what the borough wants, needs, and I guess you guys are required to provide is, is fire department capabilities to take care of the community needs. What the fire department wants, believe it or not, is to provide these services to the borough and to do so in a way that's efficient, as safe as possible. To do that, it just seems to me that there's enough mutually beneficial interest there that there's got to be a solution to be arrived that makes everybody happy. Certainly not one that can be arrived on or agreed upon if you trade press releases with each other because that's just a hell of a way to, that's a hell of a way to repose. I'm sorry. Don't mind. Sorry. As I told Rick a while ago, the chief actuary for big insurance companies works for a friend of mine. They'll be, one of the key pieces of information that affects the charges and costs for homeowners' insurance, fire insurance, if you will, is the location of the fire department. And even if it's up a lock outside of the community, i.e. Landville Fire Station, for example, it's outside of the community. So the checkmark goes to it's not community based. That affects, doesn't matter what else goes on. The next thing that affects it is the rating of the fire department, as it would the rating, the ISO rating, that is, of our own fire department. That goes into it as well. But if it's not community based, there's an up charge. And that's the same as raising taxes. It just looks a little different. I mean, you guys can still run next time and say, "We didn't raise taxes." But if costs go up for the community, for the people that live in the community, it's the same effect. My understanding is that if you've contract up for fire protection services, that it's a, it's a reasonable hit on insurance. I don't even know what that is because I couldn't, I tried pumping the guy for, you know, is it 2%? Is it 8%? Is it 22%? He wouldn't tell me. So, you know, it's competitive pressure, it's this, it's that, but the bottom line is it affects the insurance costs. So I would suggest going forward, Rick, if you, anybody, anybody other than the two guys that have worked with the fire department so far, who were there and chose not to say anything while they didn't vote to approve the bookkeeper, I would suggest that you or one of your counterparts give our president a call. Say, "Hey, can we have a one-on-one conversation? Talk about where we are, talk about what the intentions are, and figure out a way to go forward." I mean, you know, I'll give you the old cliche, the definition of insanity, right? Let's keep doing the same thing over and over again, expecting something different to happen. If you keep fighting the war, having two attorneys that don't necessarily see eye to eye on everything, if, if they're in front of it and anytime you hit a roadblock, you use press releases, that, that's not going to get the darn thing solved. Other communities love their fire departments. They're no different than ours. Maybe there's some history, maybe there's some issues, but the bottom line is when the tones drop, the guys come running. And all they want to do is be outfitted, capable, cool and ready, you know, and have everything they need to go through the job they do for free. That's my suggestion to you.
And just to respond specifically just to the bookkeeper position. The reason why I didn't speak to that because that had been agreed upon months prior, five months back to that meeting. We had met Councilman Katina, Councilman Verge, myself, okay? Met the fire department with the bookkeeper there and the president of the fire department assured us that even if it went to vote, that they, that that bookkeeper would be hired. And the story...
Why didn't you, why didn't you say, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, Jim? I thought, I thought we were going to get a vote on this to get this to go forward. You know, I represented back to council that..." And why didn't you say something? And then after the meeting, say something?
You saw when I, when I got to the fire, and, and I don't want to drag this up. Jim's walking in, I'm walking in behind him. Who ended up leaving me in the fire department?
I.
All right. I, I mean, yeah, I don't want to get into cordial, not cordial, but again, him as the fire chief, two of his officers, the reappointed bookkeeper, okay? And I think as the council, we've agreed that he's the president of the fire company. He needs to give direction, you know? Rick, Rick is, is our president. If we have certain questions, we provide him with information. But I don't think that it's our responsibility to direct the president of the fire company how to conduct his meetings. They opted, they opted not to present it. I came back to council and gave that, gave that report.
Well, Mikey, if you're going to come to the fire department meetings, I mean, you're, in my opinion, you shouldn't be there to observe only and take notes and come back and give information. You should be a valuable participant. I mean, you offered information about the car crews.
Let me interject something here.
Absolutely.
Fire department does not want us at those meetings. They made that very clear. We don't vote, we have no power to vote at any of those meetings.
Yeah, but you're there, you can add value.
No, we can make suggestions, but at this last meeting, Jim Kochen came in and told us directly, "We're not hiring that bookkeeper." Where the month before, he said they were. We could have been another month down the road by getting the bookkeeper in there. For some strange reason, we have never, ever been able to get financial records from that fire department. Do you know, we pay for, if this pen fell on the floor over there, we pay for that. There's nothing in this, over there that we don't pay for. EMS is over there rent-free since that building has been over there. Never paid a penny. We pay all insurances, we pay gasoline, we pay for all equipment, and you're, you're giving one side of your story here, but this, this, these folks up here have a fiduciary duty to tell you where our tax money goes.
I do believe you do.
Now, now, wait a minute, wait a minute. You're coming up here to give one side of the story. Now, whenever we ask them to show us where the money was spent, they have never done it. Freedom of Information Act, they ignore. They don't, they don't want us there. All they want is give us the money and go away. We're not going to do that anymore. Past councils have done that. We used to give them $27,000 a year and they survived on that. But yet, they wanted to build that million dollar building that we couldn't afford, nobody could, and then once they built it, we had to go pay for it. And you know, all the money we put into it, it's not even in our name. The title is in their name. They could sell that building anytime they want. You're, you're going to give them one side of this story here.
Yeah.
And I, I, no, honestly, I think you're wrong by coming up and doing what you're doing.
Pardon me now?
I think you're wrong by coming up and doing what you're doing, doing here. Now, you, you go to the meetings over there, we try to get along with them. You said I, you know, was jovial and everything. I try to be that way. But they try to shove it to us every time we go over there. And we're not going to take it anymore.
And Phil, Bob's right. We took, we took what was a $27,000 budget, okay? $27,000 a year, that was it. We, we've taken our budget from $27,000 to $141,000, okay? In a five-year span. But yet, the fire department will still put out to their friends, to their neighbors that we're not doing anything for. I think to go from 27 to 141 is a pretty giant leap. Second off, okay, we had an audit done. I can own that. Now, it just comes, comes to our attention, the, the fire department has its own annual audit conducted every year. Whenever they've presented us with budgets, why have they never made that annual audit that is done, presented with their budget?
I can't answer that. I'm not an officer.
I understand that, but again, like Bob has said, there, there are two sides of this issue.
And I know finance is the biggest issue that the borough has. And I, it seems to me that that's the biggest issue. And I'm not saying that it's a small issue. For what it's worth, I'll go back to the tone or the, the general feeling that I have among whether it be officers or troops, it's more of an acceptance of when. And my general understanding was the reason they didn't bring the bookkeeper up for vote this time is because they thought they needed to wait until the ordinance was in effect because the ordinance calls for the bookkeeper. And they were looking at the dominoes falling and that.
Phil, let me, let me ask you something. I went to 13, 15 months of meetings since I've been on council for consolidation with Crafton, with Ingram and Carnegie. We went down the road 13 to 15 months, then we were eliminated because the inventory, financial records, any kind of business documents or whatever were needed for us to give to the other communities so that we can all share the cost of what's going to happen. They kicked us out within two weeks after they asked us for the, for the information. John Kandrick sat in his room, said he was at that meeting. He never came to the meetings. It was me, Pat Katina and Mike Sarsfield that went to those meetings and a few that was attended by Carol Cope. But when we went down there, we tried to do consolidation, to try to get the costs down and work with other communities. The only reason why we didn't make it is because we have nothing to show them. Why would a fire department that wants to work with us not tell us what they're doing with our, the money we give them? It doesn't make sense. Now, I can come up here and now, again, I'm talking, giving you my side or whatever. I think before you sit here or stand there and let the paper write something that you're saying, you should get the whole story first.
That was partially my point about the press release not being the whole truth. I only know what I know.
We have no other alternative but to, to take the road we're taking.
The other point of the... As opposed to a phone call, Bob, come on.
We've tried that. We've tried to have meeting after meeting in this room in here and they won't come. Or whenever they come, they want to argue all the time. If we're paying for everything and we have to account to the taxpayers as to where we're spending our money, Mike is right, we give them $142,000 now rather than $27,000. We just wrote a check that we approved tonight in our bill list for $38,000 for the pumper truck. On an annual arrangement, we have to pay that off, not in our name, it's in their name. We pay $8,000 a month for the mortgage and another $1,000 a month for the mortgage on the land. We pay $8,000 a month for the mortgage, and another $1,000 a month for the mortgage on the land. It's not in our name. We're asking for that because we would, the way it should work is, we, if we're paying for it, it should be our property. Why are we going to pay all this money, and then we wind up with nothing at the end? That's what they're upset about because we're asking for financial records.
And Phil, the other purpose of the bookkeeper to get in there early was to help them prepare a budget for this year. Just so you know that, that was the other reason we wanted to try to get the bookkeeper in there. Because they haven't been included in past budgets other than what we've sort of given them. But we needed, we were trying to substantiate what exactly they needed, and we thought the bookkeeper could go back and do that for us and help that as well.
It could be, Phil, that the individual firefighter is not privy to the conversations that we have with the leadership of the fire department, and I, I wouldn't be surprised at that. But as Bob has mentioned, a year ago, we asked for financial documents through a, a right-to-know request because otherwise our requests were ignored. That doesn't indicate a willingness on the part of the fire department to work with us. Yeah, it would be nice if everything was all smooth and positive, but it's not been. And I don't think it's unusual for there to be a statement in the paper that, that discussions are at an impasse. That happens all the time. It doesn't mean that the world is ending. You could see in the paper any day that a government group, and a company, or a government group, and a labor group, where somebody in the group are having discussions and have come to an impasse, and then a month later, they come back and they resolve it. Doesn't mean the end of the world. I don't think it puts a negative light on Carnegie that we're having a debate, which has been going on for 12 years with the fire department, and is sometimes contentious. I don't think that that's a surprise to anyone, and I don't think it discourages anyone from coming here. But we do have, we do have responsibilities to the taxpayers, and we have to keep reiterating this statement every month, that we just need to get financial data. Right now, we cannot tell the taxpayers what the money is being used for. And that's, that's the bottom line.
Phil, in your agenda there, you guys show on the second page, a report for the fire department. Two years ago, we offered for them to come here, set up a seat over here for John Candrex or whoever they want to send, send over, and they're never here. They don't even want to come to, to sit with us on the council. That's ridiculous. Why don't, why can't, if everyone else gets a report here, why are they immune from doing that? And I disagree with you with your insurance scenario, because we went through that for three years now, and that is not true.
I'm just telling you what an actuary told me.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, back, back in, in 2000, 2009, latter part of 2009, 2010, when that was, was the big talk, that, you know, without growing, the fire company insurance rates would go through the ceiling. I mean, there was a half dozen insurance companies contacted. Each and every one of them said the same thing. When it affects it is when you're like in a place like Burgess, and your closest fire company is four miles out. They said with, with the amount of fire departments and the amount of equipment that is in the area, as long as it's, you know, we're not contracting with Belverne. And that's what we were doing. Maybe it's changed.
Maybe you talk to agents, maybe you talk to whoever you talk to. I'm telling you that there's an awful lot of math that goes on behind the scene, behind the scenes as they determine what a rate structure should be for, for a community. And it's based on a lot of things.
Let me ask you something else.
One of those things happens to be, do you have your own fire department or not? One of those questions tied into that, is it paid or not? If you've got a paid fire department, like Mount Lebanon does, their rates are such, are lower as a result of that because they know there's somebody staffing it 24 by 7. The chance of greater losses is diminished somewhat as opposed to a volunteer force, which is what the bulk of the world has at this point.
So wouldn't Pennsbury's price be higher than for insurance since they don't have their own fire department?
Probably.
Because that's not what Mayor Harper told our mayor.
No, no, that's, that's your misstatement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said Mayor Harper said that their rates went down this year. That doesn't mean that their prices don't aren't higher than ours. That means because of the rating of our fire department, their prices went down.
Hey Phil, whenever you have a false alarm or you have a fire control house. Our fire department does not bill for that. Now, I have nationwide insurance, I got a good policy, and I have a line I'm on here that says fire department. $500. Now, you can, you can make it 1,000, you can make it 1,500, whatever you want to pay for it. But they don't bill for stuff like that. Now, why wouldn't you, if you're going to do what other fire departments do, why wouldn't you bill for a false alarm or when you do come out to fight a fire? You do it with an ambulance?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, I can answer that one. They were presented the contract for Revenue Rescue. All, I, there was a third-party billing service. All the, all the fire department had to do was sign that contract. That's what actually Mount Lebanon does. They use this third-party company to collect the fees from insurance companies. I did all the work on that, brought them in here, talked to the fire department. All the fire department did, had to do was have their attorney review it and sign the contract, and they will start to, they will start recovering against the insurance companies in the fire department, never mind to, I followed up repeatedly, month after month after month.
And I, I can't answer the why, it seems unreasonable to me, but.
It was called Revenue Rescue.
Yeah.
John Candrex probably still has, I would hope still has the documentation on that.
Phil, you collect assets on this all the time.
We, we have several years' worth of debating, and it's not going to be possible probably to satisfy your concerns tonight, but we appreciate that you're in the fire department. We appreciate that, we appreciate all of our firemen, and we tell them that all the time. We do tell the firemen, we appreciate them putting us on.
You should press release that says that sometimes, so the regular guys know.
We have, we put stuff in the paper, but anymore. And you know what, Phil? I think we're just frustrated because, and I think me and Mike probably, at this point, have been on here the longest. Okay, well, how long have we been on here? Six years? Six years. This has been going on since I've been on this council for six years. And when, and when I first got on and we were already with the fire department, we were talking about fundraising, okay? The fire department said, they're volunteer fire departments, they're not fundraising because they shouldn't have to. I said, I didn't like that answer, but I thought, okay. We were on the parkway, where else, we did a boot drive for them, we did all kind of, you know, fundraisers to raise money for them. I, me and my sisters, and you know, I have five of them, said we would do a cash bash, or we went over there, would do a Super Bingo, would do this, would do that, never a word. Carol's doing the penny drive, okay? And then, for them to turn around and say that we don't care about them, we just want to get rid of them, I mean, it just, it just, I'm just frustrated with it. You know, they can't give us the financial. People come up to us in the community and say, well, I saw that you gave the fire department another 57,000, you gave the fire department another 40,000, what do they do with it? And you know what I have to say? I don't know. Because they won't tell us, they won't tell us what they're, what they spent.
You pay the bills all year, you can no longer say that.
That's only the last couple of months.
The chief gave the fire department $15,000 for the 5K run. He just gave them the money. We don't know where that went. We do pay their bills, they give us their mortgage bill, they give us their light bill, water bills, et cetera, and we pay those. But there's other monies, we just, Bob and Mike just did a car, a car cruise for, for the fire department. Gave them money. And you don't, not if you can.
Whenever, whenever you rent the hall, you do a fundraiser, or any other money comes in like that, I'd like to know where it goes. Now, the fire department is funded by the state, at the $244,000 a year to be a volunteer fire company. We now give them 142 a year, plus $38,000 for the pumper truck on an annual basis. New hose, on and on and on. We give them probably 250 to 260,000 dollars a year. So the 142 is really not accurate. We give them a lot more than that. Now, that is the money that we give them from the taxpayers, but the pass-through money from the state, 44,000, is only supposed to be used for equipment. We don't, we don't know what they do with that money. We're, you know, we're writing an ordinance right now so that we can work with a company that's financially and fiscally sound, so we know that they're going to be there for us. We pay everything as it is. There's never been a time that they didn't come in this room and ask for something, and we didn't give it to them. Never. I've been on council three years now. Every time they've come here, we've, we've given them what they want.
Well, riddle me this, why do you think this occurs?
Because they're going back 27 years, whenever the council and the fire department did not get along, that's carried forward to, to today. And I'm, I'm just, there are one person that I feel, feel is responsible for that over there, and I think he's the instigator for the whole thing. If he wasn't there, I think we could get, work with the fire department.
And, and, you know, Phil, as Sue said, we help them with fundraisers, and believe it. God bless each and every one of our firefighters, every firefighter across America. Because at one point, I thought, you know, volunteers were just in Pennsylvania. But no, it's that way everywhere, whether you go to North Carolina, South Carolina. So believe it, they're brave men, they're brave women, to do what they do. But I was just out in Hickory, there were out festivals, okay? There was 15, 25, selling this, doing this, doing that. And I understand, they're under the same requirements. Have to go to the same meetings, the same train, the same everything, okay? I was out at Burgess time for a festival. There was, there had to be 30 firefighters. Had a booth here, had a booth there. I was at Collier, whenever they, they had the thing on the path, there was firefighters, had a booth. So I understand, but every one of these firefighters are required to do the same train, the same things. And there's no dishonest council that wouldn't work with them and wouldn't do anything that was going to help stimulate their economy, bring in money. But we need to, to move forward, and I hope that we can continue to move forward. But there has to be an open relationship. We're making certain requests, and they need, need to present us with certain documents. And we're not unreasonable in our requests.
Then why does this happen? That's what I'm saying.
You tell us.
You tell us.
I mean, you can't sit there and say.
They've been buying this for six years, they won't give us, they won't give us any financials, they won't tell us.
To give you an idea, the bookkeeper's been trying to get records for the past three days. She's been, she's been with Dan DeMarco, she's contacted Jim. They just haven't provided her anything. She was, they were supposed to provide her that, they were supposed to provide it Friday, they were supposed to provide it today, and nothing's still been provided. And Dan DeMarco's, I believe, was just saying, he doesn't know at this point either, what's going on. So I, I, I'm not sure where the disconnect is, but I don't know. I'm just questioning that fact.
I'm sorry to take so much of your time.
We appreciate your concern, Phil, honestly, we do. The, the council here does not have interest in fighting with the fire department, we just don't. We've, you have to understand, when we go into caucus, you've got six council people that are all equally upset. It's not like there's some division where some think we're being too hard on the fire department and the others think we're not. There's literally a frustration with all six members of council that we're just not getting anywhere. And we want to see something happen. And if, if we have to poke at them a little bit in the paper, we were obviously prepared to do that.
And Phil, something else came up in the last night.
If, if we had tried these other things and they had worked, well, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be at this spot.
Whenever the Methodist Church caught on fire, the roof down there, we weren't the first ones there. That was in Carnegie. Crafton was there. Crafton was on TV, we weren't. Whenever the guy went in the creek that year, and he drove his car into the creek, Crafton went in and got him, not us. They were on TV. What's the problem? You know, is it money? They don't like us? They don't have enough equipment? I don't know what it is, but there's a lot of problems over there.
In many cases, in a lot of communities, Monday through Friday, 8 to 6, is a pretty tough time to get volunteers together. Granted, Crafton was able to. That's why we've got mutual aid agreements across communities so that you can help each other out. That's just part of what you get when you have.
In the interest of, of letting some other folks speak, I, we appreciate very much your concern.
Mr. President, I have one quick thing to say. I believe Sue, this is what you were going to say, correct me if I'm wrong. But as far as the press release, we don't write them, we don't see them till after they're gone. And in my particular, I mean, my email comes and says, I have issued the following press release. Okay, no, I'm going to, I have. Okay, and in my particular case, as you know, I didn't see my email for like five weeks. And I would, I was even asking people, what's going on, what's going on? And I don't think people wanted to upset me because of my email. And they were like, oh, not, nothing, you'll just get upset, don't worry about it. And I actually saw that press release like three days after it went. So I'm not sticking up for myself, I'm just saying, you know, if I wrote them, it wouldn't be written like that, trust me. But that's the way it went out, and is that.
That's not.
But isn't it true? Did you see them before they got?
No, but I can do that he was going to.
I didn't know, I wasn't here.
I appreciate you taking the time to give me some background.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Just a couple minutes here. Sorry, I have two items, but first of all, I got to ask you a question. You said something about EMS rent, is rented for you or rented by?
Here, for instance, I've known these been there.
Is it not part of the fire department?
Well, there's two, the, uh, fire department is a nonprofit organization. EMS is for profit. John Candrex owns the EMS department.
Well, he, he's the major weather. We don't have, we don't have.
It's the operation.
Okay.
It's using the Carnegie-Bell Fire Department as a basis of operation.
Yes.
And they don't pay rent.
They're, they're supposed to start paying rent here in 2013. Whenever we first went, went, went through the budget and went, they had said EMS actually was, was the financier, the lender of money to help them build buildings and, and all that. So we, we came up with, with an agreement that starting in 2013, that EMS would begin to pay rent for their space in the building. When the fire department built the fire, built the fire hall, EMS is for profit organization, and they loaned the down payment essentially, was, was pretty big, to the fire department to get the fire hall mortgage. For ensuing six or seven years, nobody ever, the, the, the fire departments thought was that since they loaned the money to them, they shouldn't have to pay rent. Bob Kohler, when, when Mr. Kohler was on, and Mrs., Mr. Sarsfield were there too, there was a big audit of the fire department. And at that time, it was discovered that the EMS wasn't paying rent. So for a period of five years, they have been defraying with the money that they loan the fire department. So they haven't exactly been rent-free, it's been coming off of what they loaned them. Now, beginning next year, they're going to actually start advancing, paying rent.
As, because there's been so much appreciation of what they loaned.
I was, I was just curious about, because then, beside that, we get a letter from them once a year to say, for anger issues and so on. And I was wondering if you talked about, there's no record of what money they receive. That's a separate thing altogether.
Well, let me ask you one other question here, explain something. Does anybody on this council or in this room have a document to show that the EMS department gave the fire department a loan? Does anybody have that?
No.
Did you hear the answer, no? So I don't believe that myself. And I, we've asked for it before. I mean.
Everything that I'm hearing by itself been ended, in other words, I could be over there forever.
Well, that is, that's not going to happen. The supposed loan, we cannot prove that there was a loan. So they are getting rent for free, and I brought this up for three years now, we've never gotten an answer.
If there's a loan, isn't it on record anymore?
It just shows the down payment, not where they got it from.
Let me just talk about two things I want to ask you about. How about Michael, you know me with the truck problem? I, the chief sent a letter off to the state, I'm off with him signs, he hasn't worked on that. But. He hasn't worked on that to me. But, uh, two weeks ago, a tractor trailer made a left-hand turn coming up Chestnut. They left hand turn up on Summit, and he got stuck. He brought, he brought the whole day on the road for about two hours, right at the time everybody's going to work. Now, me personally, I don't care if they can stay sitting on it forever. However, that truck was in a situation where he's going to have to walk over a sidewalk on Summit Street, which is Carnegie. Now, you guys are not going to repair the sidewalks, you're not going to repair the curbs. But you'll make us repair them if they get all hustled up. But no one is doing anything. And I'm waiting for an answer from the state, and the chief has got to be back when he wants to. But, uh, boy, he doesn't have to be back. We just get signed. But a sign saying that no left turn off of Chestnut on Summit, no right turn off of Summit down on Chestnut, keep them off the sidewalks.
We talked about that.
By the way, that truck, when he got stuck, this is, this is what really hurts. He has those two big long bars of bar across the back. I don't know what that's for. Stopped by another car from going underneath one. He's in a dead sock or wherever. But, uh, when he made it up the angle of the hill, and that's another thing. State of Pennsylvania, once had a ruling, uh, a certain weight factor would not use a road in excess of, I think it was 20 something degree. And that street up there is a heck of a awkward 20 something degree. Those trucks coming up there are a lot heavier. So anyway, he's back in, went down, dragged on the road, and he's stuck. Um, sad part of all is, he's supposed to have signs over there, and he wouldn't even have a left-hand turn. That poor guy, because he was supposed to pick one off Sunset, because it came up, he's getting citation after citation. And all he did was a legal left-hand turn. He's getting citations for it. I don't know if it's going to do him well.
Well, we were up there, remember when we were up there and that truck had to go all the way around, and it, this is a Spirit's truck driver. And what did he tell both of us?
I can't recall.
They said, there's no way on earth anybody with a trailer truck should try to make a left-hand turn onto that street. And, and I have to agree with you. So I don't know if it's a Penn Don issue, I don't know what it is. But in my opinion, there's no way on earth that a trailer truck should try to make a, coming out Forsyth, should try to make a left-hand turn in that street. When you have a professional driver who, who basically said that to both of us when we were up there.
I know you've been super late, but, you know, very young. A lot of them just can't believe they're driving through residential area. And, uh, those type of vehicles. Carnegie got a lot of room. You know, let them rip up the sidewalk. You guys go up and replace them. As simple as that. You've got a lot of money. It says here you got over here.
We have an annual budget of about $4 million, which is accounted for each year with a, a budget, which is public information. If you would like to see that, you could have a-
You've got somewhere in here about $13 million.
Yeah, I need to see what you're looking at.
I'm sure. But there's another thing on here. If you really get, get some going, I'll show you. I'll give it to you. It's on the single item.
I believe it's our, I believe it's the audited financial statements is why you're looking at it. Okay.
Um, the reason I'm getting to that was that $1 million over here at the summit will borrow. My best friend said, why, you're blocked, you've got all this money. I'm not a man to would strike one. Things monetary, things.
Well, you have things that are worth money because it's a building or it's property. I mean, it's not money to spend, you know?
Okay. This last thing I just wanted to make a comment to you is, uh, assessed valuation of actual property in Burrow today for the year ending December 31, 2021, is $292,280,000, et cetera. How come at the end of a year you don't have that amount of money coming?
That's actually gone out.
That's the property, the old one. What's the value of all the property in Burrow, privately owned property?
Is that saying, that's what you're going to do to the value?
That's not what that's, that's saying how much all the property is.
If you add up your property and all the property of those-
That's, that's-
No, I wish we got 300. It's, yeah, yeah, we can get that, but we have no problem. We, we will fix it. Your sidewalks will be fixed.
I thought that was a good slide. Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Joanne Letcher. Uh, I took over Lee White's position as executive director of the Carnegie Community Development Corporation. Uh, if you don't know me, I've been a business owner in Carnegie for about 24 years. I own J&amp;L Travel on Chestnut. I see all those trucks coming, and I stand there and go nuts, but anyhow. Uh, yeah. But, so I've been around, I've been at the business end of Carnegie. I'm a rotarian. Uh, I was on the board of the Carnegie Boys and Girls Club. I was on the CCDC board prior to this. Uh, Lee recommended me, so here I am. Uh, Lee did a wonderful job for the last five years. Lots of good things are happening, and I look forward to working with all of you. I think there's great things happening in the future with Carnegie. Lots of good people are coming our way. So with theater and restaurants and more businesses, I think it's a really positive album for Carnegie. So I just wanted to say hi, and, um, I'll be working with you in the future. So thank you.
I already have to, and I want to congratulate you.
Oh, thank you.
Looking forward to the part that you have.
Joanne, I just mailed you a letter on the way down here.
Oh, okay.
Actually, it's a donation letter for the children because you've always been a contributor. But it does say on it that I wished you congratulations and good luck in your new position.
Oh, thank you.
So you'll get it probably with mail, probably.
And just, uh, real quick, um, I've been the community life chair for BAC. Um, Jack's been to a lot of our meetings, and we're really looking forward to the Christmas, um, event Jack's really put a lot of time and effort into. So you'll be here and I'll be back in the future. We're getting the flyers out. But we're hoping to do a really nice church tour for Christmas, the same day as the cookie walk. So that's our-
Where's your, I'm sorry. Where's your office going to be?
Um, I'm actually, I have a desk for the CCDC right in J&amp;L Travel. So I'm right here. You can come visit if you want.
What are you going to do with 17 East Main Street?
Uh, that's a good question. We'll be looking at that. Um, there are some things happening with that. But, um, possibly, I know the borough might be interested in that for a parking lot. Would be definitely willing to talk. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Yes, ma'am.
My understanding is that Carnegie is one of the many municipalities that has contracted and passed with the Triangle Animal Control Services. And given the media attention of the recent week, um, I would like to know if Carnegie explains our, for the future, or if that has been decided yet.
Um, who's, Jeff, can you speak to that? Or Steve, what's our animal control situation right now today?
I think they're, they're the only, we, we've looked, I think you're asking if we're going to renew with-
Well, I don't think that's an option at this point.
No, no.
So, and, but-
The borough is doing right now is they are using the county, the county dog catcher basically come in and pick up things, take them to, take them to the open shelters. Um, obviously, we can't use, our contract is with Triangle Pet. And Triangle Pet has a hearing on their license, I believe, in December. So there's an interim, there's an interim procedure in place, um, once it's determined what will be going on with Triangle Pet. If they're going to permanently lose their license or their license to be traced by the guy that's trying to get it, um, then, then council will be in a position. It'll also be the time to end the year, so that's what time that appointment is made, um, to address and, uh, either make an appointment to somebody else or, uh, know what the other options are at this point. But we do have an interim plan in place right now, depending on the outcome of the, um, litigation involving Triangle Pet.
Well, I, I would just like to encourage the council to look at all possible options, even if they do get their license back, because it certainly does not sound like this is someplace I would want nine tax dollars to go. And it's hard for me to believe that somebody that worked there for 28 years and, and stood by and called himself an animal lover and says he's going to turn the place around, um, that's hard to take seriously. I'm a volunteer at the Western Pennsylvania Humane Society, a little bit less at Animal Friends. So, um, I know plenty about open door shelters and the animal control situation in this town. So, um, I'm just, like I say, out of the, uh, a gas to see if the council did not look into other possibilities.
Okay. And, hi, this is on my Georgia, but do you know of any other possibilities that, that-
I don't know available. I've had people tell me, and again, being kind of new to the area, the whole, I guess I kind of assumed before I ever heard of them that it was kind of like a county-wide thing. And I knew Animal Rescue League took, you know, for, took for the city, any animal control contract. But I didn't really kind of understand all these independent things. My understanding is this Claire's Kennels in Upper St. Clair, which is a consortium, and I've copied the list of, 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 so we have a dozen different places.
And if I could, if you could give the chief, probably, if I was to say, because I think right now, Triangle Pet's been at it so long, I don't know if I else, know anybody else to, to-
Well, I've been, and again, when I, when this was all, I had, I first heard about Triangle Pet from the Humane Educator, Animal Friends. And she kind of said it was a dirty little secret. Um, and then when all this came out, I mean, so I wasn't kind of surprised, but more appalled at, at, at this press. And I, so I asked, I emailed her, I emailed Western Pennsylvania Humane, what they, you know, kind of looking for position statements, and everything's still developing. But this Claire's Kennels in Upper St. Clair, um, has, I've been told is a, a much more humane, um, operation. And they're, uh, right now include Upper St. Clair, Castle Shannon, Dormont, Green Tree, Mount Lebanon, Scott, and Whitehall.
You're right in that, I mean-
Yeah, I mean, so except, except for Whitehall.
So Green Tree, this Green Tree used to have the same people we did, so they just got them? I'm not guessing.
I'm not sure. I just, I, I, there's a-
Green Tree used to-
Claire's Kennels has, you know, is available on the website.
So Green Tree had the same people we did, so they must have just got them. So maybe we can contact them.
I think there, there's confusion here, and correct me if I'm wrong. I think Claire's Kennels takes the animal, but I don't think they come out and provide the service themselves. I think they're, they're a humane kennel, but I don't think they come out.
I read it that they're on duty 24/7, providing animal control services.
Because, because last year, um, me and the chief had a conversation, and he looked, and, um, I thought Mount Lebanon's animal control officers were their own animal control officers.
I think theirs are.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. You read off Mount Lebanon, I think the kennels are there to be used, but I don't think they have animal control.
But Green Tree doesn't have their own animal control officer?
See, I, I think they contract with Mount Lebanon. They utilize Mount Lebanon's animal control, and this is just the kennel that's utilized. And, and again, you know, when the chief comes back, he'll, he'll research.
Yeah, I, I left him a message actually Friday when he was asking this question, so.
We're looking into it. I think it's, um, like it was-
But based on your, your experience, you would be skeptical about us pursuing a, a contract with them, even if they were, got their license back? You say yes or no?
I want to, I want to learn from people in, in shelters that know far more than I do. You need to look elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
I want to go over.
Oh, go ahead.
No, 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 no.
No, I'll wait. I'll be waiting.
I was hoping everybody was done.
Might be something I want to talk about.
I just got to go over here on the side. Go ahead.
Sure.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Stephan. I live at 318 California Avenue. Um, I was wondering if somebody could give me an update on the Papa Jay's parking lot situation.
Mr. Sue, would you like to answer that question?
Um, how do I?
Choose your words carefully.
I have to. Um, we were aware of the situation, and, um-
I hope so.
Yeah, yeah. And-
Don't say anything. You're not allowed to.
Um, we were aware of the situation, and they are taking, steps are being taken to hopefully rectify.
Okay. Um, since this is a part of public comment, I just wanted to say that, um, I know it was a heated issue. And I just wanted to make sure, I'm sure you're all aware, that wherever I go, and I say I'm from Carnegie, everybody that I run into, as soon as you say Carnegie, we are identified as the place where Papa Jay's is. And nobody ever has anything bad to say. It's, it's a great restaurant. Oh, I love the food. It's a great location. Everybody goes there. And so I just wanted to, uh, make a public statement as a resident and a taxpayer of Carnegie that as we enforce whatever you guys need to enforce, I hope you all take into consideration that the Troy Annie family has been very good to Carnegie, purchased a very bad building that was in horrible condition and turned it into a parking lot. And I would hope that there's no negative feeling. I think there's a little bit of negativity out there in terms of, um, it's my understanding, threatening letters, fines, things like that. So as a resident, I just wanted to say that I hope that, um, we can somehow repair that relationship that may be a little bit damaged between the family and Carnegie Borough.
I don't know that they threatened. He came to the planning committee, he submitted a plan. That plan was approved, and what was ultimately completed is different than the plan that he submitted.
Wait, I think I was at that meeting when that was talked about, actually, in the back room. So we haven't sent, sent him any threatening letters?
No.
Okay, because that's-
Probably get a citation, but-
That's not the information that, um, I was provided with. The second thing that-
Threatening, threatening is a term of, uh, you know-
Open for interpretation?
Yeah, I mean, if you say, if we said, Mrs. Stephan, if you don't do something, this is what's going to happen. Is that a threat, or is that just a notice that there are consequences if something is-
I think people perceive it however they perceive it, and I, I think that's something that we all have to be aware of. Um, I also want to say that when I choose to come up here and public comment, I, I hope that it's not seen as criticism. But as a resident and a taxpayer, I only come up when I have some concerns. And I don't, I'm not singling anybody out, and I certainly am not, uh, I don't want it to be seen as criticism, but rather just, um, a thought that I have. And one that I think I want to pass on to the people that run my town. Um, there were some really powerful statements made tonight that I agree with in terms of fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of this town, uh, transparency in terms of money. And I, I think that one of my frustrations with the Borough of Carnegie has been not really feeling that there's enough transparency in terms of where we spend our money, how money comes into this town, how it's accounted for. I've always had questions on oversight, checks and balances. And this isn't just been since this council has been in place. It's been there for quite some time. And I think, just like you get frustrated with the fire department, I think the residents are sometimes frustrated with the town because we have questions that nobody seems to want to answer or can answer. And way before this council was in place, I've always been curious about the festival funds of this town because it always seemed like a pretty successful event. And, um, in the beginning, I used to ask questions like, whose festival is it really? Because it had different names, and there were different people in charge. And nobody could even answer that. Was it a part of the borough? Was it, was it not? Was it community development? Was it, who, who really was in charge of this festival? Now there's some discussion about, everybody missed it this year. And there's some discussion on, can we bring it back? In what form? You know, can we get people interested again? And certainly, as this town develops and we get new businesses, and there are a lot of positive things happening in this town, it would only, you know, it would only be a natural thought process. It would be great to bring it back. Maybe in a different format, but bigger than ever, or better, or just different. And I think, um, one of my concerns is for the past how many years, there's never a true accounting of the festival. Like, I always find myself as a taxpayer thinking, you basically block off the town for three days, gamble, serve alcohol, have all these bans. And it happens sometime in the fall, and I'm usually here in the spring saying, hey, is there a spreadsheet? Did we make a thousand? Did we make 10? Did we lose a thousand? Did we lose 10? I've never gotten a straight answer from anybody associated with this borough. Quite honestly, that bothers me. Because Excel is a pretty easy program to learn how to use. And I would think if we do these, if we want to do it again, one of the things that I would want to make sure is that there should always be an accounting in this town. is that there should always be an accounting in this town of money coming in, and money going out, and what it's spent on. I mean, I think that's common sense, and a fiduciary responsibility that every, that this council has to every taxpayer. So, I guess I'm going to ask again, because I know, I know that there's a fund with money in it, and I know the council is taking money out of that fund. And I want to know, like, is there any thought given to why? And is it being invested in something that benefits the town? And has anybody talked to anybody other than amongst yourselves about it? And are you going to continue to take money out of it? Because if we can get people interested in bringing the festival back in whatever format, then what I would say is, please stop taking money out of it, because we may need it to get it started again. Um, let's see, and then the last comment I have is kind of a personal one. Sorry. Um, I too was not really thrilled about the whole Pucci apartment thing, and I think as a taxpayer, we all have the right to voice an opinion, and, and, I mean, and it's not a lot of money, but you're going to spend money to buy it, then you're going to spend money to tear it down. There's a lot of things that we all would like to see done in the town. But I think everybody has the right to come up and say, like, eh, it's not a great idea, but you know, you run into town, so that's cool, you made the decision, go with it. I think it would have been nice if, I guess my question is, did you examine any other way to get rid of the eyesore, other than purchasing it? Was there any questions or any thought of maybe another avenue? But from a personal nature, I think it's interesting that somebody comes up and asks questions about it, and I think sometimes the questions are asked, and, and again, it can pick up the tone, I'm all about tone, you have to watch your tone, because it's not, I'm not criticizing. But what I'm saying is, I was kind of surprised tonight that when the questions are asked, are you in the real estate business? That council got pretty defensive, and we immediately went to, well, do you think we ever paid for it? That really wasn't the point we were making. You weren't making the point that you ever paid for it, pay for it whatever you want. But I'm also aware, as a resident and a taxpayer, that there are members of this council that have made derogatory comments about my family and our real estate business, and, you know, the comments about, you know, don't get mad, but all those exorbitantly priced more star buildings that my husband had listed than two or three are occupied now. And I just think it's funny that, um, as a citizen, as a taxpayer, as a resident of this town, that council can actually take that stand. I, I think it's kind of sad. But I want you to know that my husband and I are aware of what some of the members of this council think of my family and our reputation in the community. I made no apologies for it, my husband and I have never done anything but promote this town to the fullest extent, promote fair real estate prices, represent homeowners well in this community. And for the record, I would appreciate it, since you don't really know us, and you don't really know our business principles, to keep your opinions to yourself and out of the public forum. Thank you very much.
Do you want some answers on the festival account?
Do you have a spreadsheet for me?
Actually, I, I, I don't have it tonight for you.
There's actually several things that we were going to respond, every penny that we spend is accounted for, and you can know what that is.
I hope so.
All you have to do is ask, and so, but you made the implication that we don't, we don't keep track of the money we spend, we do. And the members of this council each month vote on the list of bills, and every one of those items, does council approve every one of these expenditures? Yes.
But Rich, I've never gotten accounting on, in the past. We've asked for accounting on the festival for years.
Festival money is accounted for every year.
Betty does the actual bookkeeping on it.
Yeah, we have, we have.
Bookies.
Never been able to get it popped together.
Every expenditure that the borough would make on the festival is accounted for.
Revenue, expenditures, whatever, all your stuff.
So does he make that, the last year it was run?
Beer sales is our biggest, is our biggest ticket item, that's what makes the money. I think last year, if I remember correctly, we made about twenty-nine thousand dollars on beer sales. Don't quote me on that, because it's been about a year now, but I think about twenty-nine thousand.
But did it make money?
Actually, I think we lost about a thousand dollars last year, two, a thousand or two thousand dollars.
That's the story, I mean, every year, every year we lose money, but there's money in the festival account.
No, the festival, the festival account's been going down year after year, because the festival accounts used for fireworks, it's used for, um, it last year was used for public works, and Sue went out and did a good job on Christmas decorations, so we used ours, American, uh, art Christmas decorations. And then the other community event, the Third Street Jazz Fest that we had on, um, there was some money that was fronted for the car cruise for the fire department. I mean, but that's what the money's used for, anything on there.
So it's like a slush fund?
Well, it's for anything for whatever you need. It's for community-related events, anything related to the community, like I said.
And prior, prior to last, right, and prior to last year, when we would do, when, uh, Pam Burge was running the, uh, the third, fifth, or whatever date, we have the celebration up, up in Carnegie Park, the, uh, festival fund also offset those costs.
And I think revenue from that also went back into that same, from our, our addition count.
But I will say this, is that we have given out money from that festival account this year, against my feelings, and I, even for this event, the, uh, I didn't want to give out money for, but we, and, and this will maybe forthcoming from then, but we have not received any financial records from the money that we gave out there. Nothing from the Jazz Festival, nothing from the car cruise yet. And I know, because I will get the receipts from this and make sure we receive financial records from the, uh, turtle, the, uh, turtle terror. But the, e- even that thousand dollars that we gave out for the car cruise, that should have been approved, I think, at council, same with the four hundred dollars, if those things should be approved at council, because that's a lot of penny, in my opinion, a thousand dollars is not penny cash. And it should be approved at council, it should be approved in front of the public, and if the public has a question on it, that's fine. But I do believe that everybody who takes money from any of these accounts, including a- any of us, there should be a P and L statement, balance sheet, there should be a budget first of all, to what the money's needed for, then there should be a profit and loss statement at the end, including all accounts. And that includes, in my opinion, I said this before, for all programs we run, from everything from Camp Cadet to any program that we run here, there should be, we should know what that program costs our community, so that when we work at things, we should be able to determine whether or not that, that, that it's financially reasonable for us to continue those programs.
Well, certainly, if we're thinking about starting it back up, it helps, the more detailed analysis you have on what you spent and what you took in, helps you make the decision on, you know, if someone's going to take this over, if they want to.
Betty's been doing it, I don't, I believe Betty's been, since I have gone on council, obviously, I know Betty's been doing it, I can't speak to the records to put that.
I'll be honest with you, Pat, I got a spreadsheet on one of the festivals two years ago. It, um, honestly, a six-year-old could have put one together better than.
I think that was before, though, my time, because Betty took over the bookkeeping, the borough actually took over the bookkeeping end of it two years, about, well, I was in audit for one year, basically.
Well, and, and as you, as you look around Carnegie, and things are starting to look really good, you know, we have the diner, we have, um, a lot of our vacant buildings are getting businesses in them, and there's a lot of posi, I think a lot of positive feeling that people for the first time in a long time are starting to think, geez, maybe if things keep going the way it appears that they are, maybe this will be a, this, this will be a, a, a really good step for us, back in terms of being the town that we all want this town to be. But that being said, I will tell you that I also think there should be some thought given. The other thing that bothers me as a taxpayer and a resident is, and please don't take this the wrong way, I love our chief of police, I'm very confused why a town that's trying to redevelop and come back for years has had a part-time borough manager.
Not for years, for last year, two years.
Two years, yeah, and, and I also wonder about, there has to be, I mean, how much discussion or thought process there's been about that, I mean, we've always, don't we need a full-time borough manager if, if all this development's coming, and there's all these things in the works? Doesn't it make sense to put a plan together for when we would have one? Or, you know, even if we don't need one for another year, or another, don't we need one eventually?
Right, and I think, I think this council will prepare to look at that plan, and, and look at that plan moving forward.
Because the other thing that, um, and this is just, maybe it's, it's from the business world where I come from, and that is, it's really hard to wear two hats. It's really hard not to put yourself in a situation where there's a conflict of interest. And when you look at running our police department and also being our borough manager, I think that common sense tells you there's going to be a time and a place where that's a conflict of interest.
There are actually the burrows that do have just a single position that's both. I mean, we're not really unusual in that regard, maybe in our size of the borough, maybe that's, uh, not so typical.
I'm not saying things aren't run well in our police department, I'm just saying that it's something that, as a resident, I worry about in terms of oversight, in terms of conflicts, in terms of just getting the best representation of the town.
It was a, it was a mostly financial decision, it saved us about, uh, sixty thousand dollars or so each year that we did.
Eighty was benefits.
Eighty? Eighty with benefits, yes, that's correct, with benefits. So, I mean, it's, it's a significant thing, and could, could we maybe be getting more done if we had a full-time manager? Sure.
And the other thing to consider is, because this is the other thing that's on my mind, and I'm sure on the minds of a lot of residents in Allegheny County, with the new assessment values in two thousand and thirteen, and two thousand and thirteen being a revenue-neutral year, you know, starting in two thousand and fourteen, whether or not our taxes go up, or how well you manage our tax dollars becomes really, really critical with the assessments that are out there. So, um, just something that I plunder, because as, as we sell real estate property to people, people wonder what's going to happen with my taxes after two thousand and thirteen, I do the same.
Well, people's taxes have been going down every year if you count inflation, because, uh, this council and the councils before us have held a line on taxes for quite a long time, while people's property taxes, uh, assessment did not go up, so their taxes did not go up. And each year we have inflationary costs due to healthcare, healthcare, of course, way over the rate of inflation, uh, but just mobile pay raises and expenses that we have go up every year, and we do, uh, manage with, without raising taxes. And I think it's amazing, frankly, that council's been able to do that for, for that long. I don't know how, how you could manage your household and say, we're going to have the same amount of income every year for ten years, but all of our expenses are going to go up every year, and we're just going to manage with the same amount of money. I think that councils, and not just this council, but previous councils, should get a lot of credit for that, really. I don't know, uh, I don't know how you do that long-term.
All right, thank you very much.
One quick thing, I do agree with the mayor, we had to vote on the money for the, um, Jazz Festival, and I believe we should vote on it if any more money goes out. Sue, I know yours was only four hundred dollars, and I truly believe we're going to get that back, and, because I think it's going to be a huge success, and, um, but I, I know we're getting it back from the Jazz Festival, and I, you know, Mike, no offense, but I haven't seen anything yet, I mean, as far as, you know, accounting. But, um, but I have asked, because I know we are all working very diligently to get the festival back, and I have asked that nothing else be taken out of that account. And I was assured tonight that there would be some money put back, and that it would be okay, that if we can pull it together, we'll have money for the festival, so.
If the, if council wants a festival, it'll be a festival.
We'll find it.
It's a matter, a matter of paying for it.
Right, and I had asked, was there anybody that did or did not want it, if you recall? And I think we'd all like to see it come back, as Cheryl said, maybe in a different form, a smaller form, just, doesn't necessarily have to be bigger, but better, better, smaller, different, whatever, but we'd really would love to see some of us next year, so. Do you want to do a question?
Um, just a quick response, um, maybe answering your question. Um, I was chairman of Community Life in St., well, not now, but, um, I was with BDA last summer, and we had a spring meeting, we had a business mixer, and a lot of businesses showed up. Town Center came and did a big production, and we talked about all the fun things we could do for Carnegie, you know, this year in replace of the festival to keep things going. And Phil, you were at some of those meetings, uh, we had a big business mixer, everybody talked about it, um, we came up with a lot of ideas, and then the chief actually has an application that, and it's not for nonprofits, it's for any, like, car cruise people, um, our Jazz Festival, we submitted, like, it's a long document, like, with all the proper data, and I will talk to Carnegie Arts Initiative, they need to, um, get a reporting back to the chief. You know, everybody was supposed to do.
I was at that business mixer also.
Yeah, right, Carol, so they do need to get, you know, a financial report back, and I think that's important, to keep track of this money, because if we made a profit, which we did not, um, the money was supposed to go back into the kitty. So it's, it was supposed to be replaced as much as possible, but if you didn't make money, then no. But no, everybody needs to be accountable, so.
And it was a nice event, the last festival was a very nice event.
But, but we still need to be accountable, so I'll remind them.
You know, to get the money, there should be a budget, people should, there should be a budget to get the money, and then there should be financial reports at the end.
Exactly, so I'll get on their back to do that.
I was there, and my family was there because of Chief Plague Suare, that's my cousin's band, and they're very good, yes. So, um, but thank you, yeah.
But it was a wonderful event, so we're, we're trying.
Chief, come on.
See if I can scare you a little bit.
Oh. I'm terrified already.
Lately, I don't know, let's see if there's some chores here. Uh, I mentioned about that truck being an interment door, and he also came with these breakups of all kinds of citations, and I told the commission to the chief, and he said, well, you mentioned it within the council, there's no reason to say it, ignore it, do you know? Now, he made the legal left-hand turn up the hill, and he has no signs out saying, don't make that turn. He's being cited, because he bought crap. I want to know something, is Carnegie responsible for that guy getting cited? It, Carnegie is, because as far as he's going, he's done nothing wrong. The lawsuit come back, the lawsuit can come back, are you covered with any kind of insurance?
The lawsuit.
Oh, if somebody was giving me a thousand, two thousand dollars worth of citations, because he said he was writing about all kinds of citations, I, maybe, uh, I'd get an attorney and fight it, maybe sue the mayor.
For that to come back, I consider that to be a malicious prosecution, which, number one, it has to be, it'd have to be acquitted. But, you know, that's the only way that we could be sued, if that would be a malicious prosecution.
Okay, I'm just writing up.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think if he got stuck, and somebody gave him a ticket, I don't think that's a malicious prosecution.
No, it's a lawsuit.
Hey, hey, you, I, just because somebody gets a, gets charged with something and gets acquitted, that's not a malicious prosecution, there'd have to be some, um, motive, showing, a motive that they were.
Should he have been, uh, should he have been given citations?
Well, that's, I don't know, that would be more for him than, it was.
A lawsuit, but you should not leave your legal.
What did I make sure, there were thousands of dollars worth of citations.
Well, the way, the, the, the officer was talking, he said he was writing a lawsuit.
You know, I, I remember the incident, because I was there, like, we were looking at the incident. But I, I did, the bigger expense for him would be to tow it, and, and have come here and out of it, because I'm sure they charged him a lot for the citations.
Okay, fine, I just thought I'd bring it up.
Well, one thing I'll say, Leonard, if I understood it correctly, I, from way I, it's been told to me, is that, because that's a state road.
It's just not a state road, Summit isn't, I always take what happens on Summit, and then I'll.
But, but we, I, what I was told, that we can't dictate the no-left turn off the state road, that's what I was told. And whether that's true or not, I don't know.
The chief is still alive, as far as I'm concerned.
Right, he's still working, I, I will.
Carnegie, though, can put a sign up there, no right-hand turn off of Summit, that blocks him right off the back and go back down the way he came up.
That.
You can do that.
Right.
Okay, but I just thought maybe, uh, it was possible, it's lawsuit against town, which would affect your purpose. Okay, but I just thought maybe it was possible, it's lawsuit against town, which would affect your priorities.
Anyone else with comments this evening? Uh, Councilwoman Welfare, Councilwoman Sorestill, anything?
Yes, I just want to remind everybody that you think Halloween's scary. Come down Camp Reis on, uh, this coming Saturday, and watch me and Councilman Katina bartend. Um, I would imagine it's gonna be a pretty scary sight, but we're doing it, guest bartending to raise money for Little League baseball. So hopefully, we'll all have some fun and enjoy, you know, the evening. Uh, we'll be there from eight to 10:30 bartending, so, um... And don't forget that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Um, you know, love the women in your life and those around you, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Katina?
Something more important, I have to press the button.
Councilwoman Deppco?
Yes, I'd just like to tell everybody, I think everybody here probably knows, but um, Carnegie, we're having a trail of terror at Carnegie Park. It's October 19th, and October 20th, from seven to 11:00, and October 26th, and October 27th, both from seven to 11:00. It's gonna be a long trail around the park. Um, we're starting to get it set up. It's gonna be really scary, so we don't think little kids will, I think it would be too scary for little kids. So we're gonna have a fun compaction games for the kids. We're gonna have, um, we're gonna have food to sell, caramel apples, a chocolate coffee, with little prizes for the kids. Uh, but it's gonna be really good. Seven dollars for adults and five dollars for children. So come up and see us, and if anybody wants to volunteer, we still need some zombies.
So that's this weekend and the following weekend.
No, I'm sorry, the fundraisers for the skate park.
Not this weekend.
No, not this weekend, the following weekend.
19th, 20th, 26th to 27th.
Councilwoman Beers?
You want to talk about scary? I got married in 1968, my wife, my wife lived at 1313 New York Avenue.
You're speaking of zombies?
And her, her birthday was on Halloween. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Coby?
How can I talk that? There's really not a lot of people here, but for you men, and for this gentleman, please don't forget about the Carnegie Children's Events Committee Halloween promenade. It is Saturday, the 27th. Registration begins at 12:00 noon on the bridge, and there are four age groups for the children. We have prizes for children, we have treats bag for the children, and we have a lovely little raffle for the children. If anyone wants to donate monetarily-wise, or candy, or a item for the raffle, please feel free to call me, email me, see me. Uh, real quickly, I know a lot of people here, but I wanted to thank everyone um, for all the cards and calls when I was ill, and emails, fifteen hundred of them. And especially your good thoughts, and most importantly, all your prayers. That meant the most to me, I truly believe that's why I'm here, because I was out of it. But I was told that things were so bad, you may have been looking to appoint a new councilwoman. So I'm glad to be here, and I promise to be here next month. And, um, please keep the prayers coming, because I just found out I have to have a little follow-up surgery on the 7th of November. And finally, I want to honor my father by saying, "Happy birthday, Dad." My father would have been 93 today. I miss him every day, and I love him, and he loved his borough, so, and his family, and his country, and his boys. So, thank you, and I'll see you next month.
Thank you. Okay, lots of Halloween activities coming up in the next few weeks. So hopefully, everyone will enjoy that, and we'll see you all again next month. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome back, guys.
Hey, I'm gonna buy...
Good to see you on the streets. Don't get here, you blow in your horn, somebody could...
What is this?
We have a long session.
Actually, this is one of our... This is one of our...
Motion, nobody has a...
Does it just spin around?